Ms. Rose?
Yes, good evening, sir. How are you doing?
Trying.
Now called this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. Where we get going, we have with us Mr. Raz Raspberry, who's going to be the John Carter field in for the next few meetings, I reckon.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to meet everyone this evening and looking forward to working with you. And thanks for the honor of letting us stand in for John. Those are big shoes to fill.
Welcome. The Raz has extensive, extensive experience in units. We're going to be very fortunate here.
Well, about that.
Just do what you can.
We'll see. He'll only get into so much trouble in two or three weeks. And he's the best in all the world.
He was going to say expensive experience.
You know, he knew Jamie McGraw and King.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, their mom was first cousin of mine. They all go back to common roots in Northampton and Halifax County. Lots of memories of big family getting together.
I spent many a day over at their house.
Did you really?
Yeah.
So they kicked them out.
I was waiting for it. That was an underhand. I was waiting to see somebody take a gamble.
Count on that guy.
That one was real slow.
And we're the same age.
Yes, yes, we are. Eighty-two.
It's age in place.
All right, Council, we have a copy of the proposed agenda for a nice meeting. And I would entertain a motion to adopt this agenda. But we want to move item number 14, which is the first trial water sewer plan model study presented to us due to at six o'clock. Remember recess or sometime thereabouts and do the presentation with River Black Church. They're bringing a, bring us a check. So we'll make room for that.
Please.
Anyway.
Adoption to, okay. Adoption of the agenda with proposed changes. Second.
Okay. Any discussion here or none? All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have the adoption of the minutes from December 3rd, 2024, regular workshop meeting and the December 11th, 2024 special meeting. And we have 11 consent items.
We would option of the minutes and consent items as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're going to go ahead and start with our presentation. First trial water.
But while they're doing that, I'll go ahead and kick us off. Good evening. We have tonight first trial advisors. And the reason that they're here is to go over the water, the new and updated water sewer rate model. You'll recall, this will be our third water sewer rate model. We had our first model done for us back in, I think, 2009 or 2010 by Ractellas. And then we updated the rate model in 2017 using Standtec. And we started realizing that, first of all, the rate model for Standtec served us well, but it was very complicated. A lot of tabs, a lot of work papers involved, a lot of complicated information put out. So while we normally showed the dashboard, which kind of simplified things down and got to what we were really, you know, where we were ultimately trying to end up was a lot to get there. And then with the Parkwood, the sewer project, we knew that we would be required by that to see if we were borrowing a certain amount of money that we would have to update the rate model anyways. So we went ahead and started going down the path to get that done. First trial, we have worked with them. They are our financial advisor, so they worked with us with the revenue bonds that we did for phase two of the project. And they also, if you recall, did the capital planning model for us for the general fund, which we did not previously have. Because we had gone out for the RFP and we are familiar with them and their services and comfortable, they were able to work with us to move forward with doing the model. It is a very similar model. We had it built for us specifically. And it's very similar in looks to the information that you all are normally accustomed to seeing with the dashboard, the just-in-time increases, what does the 2.25 look like? How does it affect our fund balance? It uses the CIP information. All of that is very similar. But to get to the end goal of having the information, it's a lot simpler process for staff to use. It is still a model that staff can update. And of course, First Trial is always available to answer my random questions through email. And they're, they've been great to work with. So on that note, I will turn it over to Amy and Brandon.
Great. Thank you for having us here this evening. As Sabrina mentioned, last time I was here, I think it was to talk about the general fund capital planning model. So part of our goals as financial advisor is to develop products and services that are easy for our clients to use and hopefully makes things a little bit smoother. So just quick just background on our firm. First Round Advisors has been around for, I think, since 2005. I've been with the firm since 2014. My, Brandon Decost and I cover North Carolina and South Carolina and do a lot of work on the debt financing side of things. But we also do a lot on capital planning and building out these models as well. We find those two services kind of go hand in hand and are helpful to our clients. So I'm going to talk a little bit, an overview of the model itself, since this is the first time you all have used this specific model. And then we'll go into a couple of the scenarios that Sabrina had mentioned and the two and a quarter percent and then the just-in-time scenarios. So this is very similar to your general fund model. And our whole premise is we want to take, there's a lot of different information that gets gathered while being, while financing is being considered or projects are considered to be funded that we want to keep in mind. So there's things like you have existing debt that's rolling off. You have your financial performance, historical, historical performance that we want to project out. You've got your CIP, which you've got a pretty healthy CIP list of projects that you want to fund. Do you want, and part of what this model will do is help determine, do you want to fund those with cash or do you want to debt fund those, those projects? And then we also incorporate a credit profile. So each of the credit rating agencies, they have what we call, you know, rating, credit rating scorecards. So that's another element that we incorporate into our models as well. So that as you're making different financial decisions, you can see what potential impact that might have on your credit rating. So all of our models have this dashboard page, which basically allows you to list all your, your projects. This particular page would be the, you know, the projects that are being considered potential debt. So right now, we've got the Parkwood Sewer Project, the Western Trunk Sewer Phase Two, and then the Western Regional Main Pump Station. And, you know, you could, this can be as lengthy a list as you want, because the beauty of it is you can just turn the projects on and off in the model. And then you can also very easily play with the different assumptions that are on the page. So, you know, bids are coming in a little bit higher, or you might not finance as much, or you want to look at a flip between cash funding and bond funding. You can do that very, very easily in the model and everything just automatically updates. I mentioned, part of the engine behind the model is, you know, putting in the city's historical financial information. So we have all, going back five years, the city's financial information built out, audit information. And then that allows us to then project those, up the revenues and expenditures out into the future. And make sure that, you know, as we're trying, as we're looking at what assumptions are being used, it helps us to can look back historically and just make sure that the assumptions that are being used are reasonable. We mentioned earlier, can, what one of our, I think, one of the advantages of our model is that we do try to make things as simple as possible on the output side. So we try to have these streamlined dashboard output pages that very simply show, like in the top left-hand there is your, here's your debt service, now here's your current debt service, here's what the new debt service would look like when that gets layered on. And we want to look at things like your debt service coverage ratio, which is a very important metric to the rating agencies. And also, it's one of your rate covenants that you maintain a certain minimum debt service coverage. We want to see how, from an operating performance perspective, what do your net earnings look like year over year and how do those projected to perform into the future? We look at days cash on hand. That's another really important metric from the credit rating agency viewpoint. And then, you know, average customer bill, that's another important metric that we want to look at. And then that little tachometer on the bottom, that just kind of gives, it's an indicator of where your credit rating is coming out. So right now, based on credit rating agency Moody's, their scorecard, your revenue bond scorecard is coming out in that kind of mid double A level, double A, double A three. So as you're playing with different scenarios, if that little arrow on that tachometer starts to go better or worse, that gives a feeling for, particularly worse, if you're funding a lot of projects and say you want to fund the model with cash and that drains your cash fund balance, then, you know, that's going to, that's going to show up as negative on that tachometer. So it just gives us a good visual cue as to when, you know, what, what's going on with the city's credit rating as different projects are being funded. And then another piece of information that you can pull out of the model pretty easily are these peer comparisons. So what we've done is we've loaded up, you know, various cities and towns, water and sewer system metrics from across the state. So those that are in the double A level, so very quickly you can compare the city of Jacksonville's metrics on days cash on hand and also debt service coverage or, and annual, yeah, total annual debt service coverage ratio to determine whether, as you're funding projects, is it, you know, are you staying kind of on track compared to other peers around the state? So that's my quick overview of the model. And then we're going to go into the scenarios that I think you're used to seeing, which are main, and first, we'll talk about some of the assumptions that we used as we started to develop these scenarios. So all the revenues, other than any revenues that are not determined by utility rates themselves, we made the assumption that those would grow 1% annually, so being fairly conservative with on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, salaries and employee benefits, we grew those at 5%. Any kind of insurance or contracted services, we grew at 3%. And then any other non-capital expenditures, we assumed a 1% growth rate within the model. And then the two metrics that we wanted to use to determine whether you're on track financially, kind of our guardrails as you're determining on projects on or off, we wanted to maintain a minimum debt service coverage ratio, ratio of 1.5 times. So your net earnings basically would be one and a half times greater than your debts, annual debt service that you would need to pay in that year. And then your days cash on hand, the amount of money, funds, cash that you maintain in your utility fund, that would be at 365 days. So basically, if not another penny came to the door, you could continue to operate your system for 365 days. And those are pretty good targets from a rating agency standpoint. And this, these targets become important, particularly when we're looking at that just-in-time So from a capital improvement plan, just looking at what you're funding, so you've got $83.5 million of projects being funded. I think the headers may have gotten cut off at the top there. But the column, you have the dates on the side. The column, second column from the left, those are your cash funded projects. So right now, we're assuming in the model, we've got built in over the next 10 years, $72.3 million of cash funded projects. And then you have $11.1 million of debt funded projects in there. Mainly that Western Trunk Sewer Phase Two, which we've got programmed in in 2027 as a debt financing. And then in 2029, the Western Regional Main Pump Station, that would be in at, yeah, 2029. For each of those bond issuances, we assumed a 15-year term with a 5% interest rate. So again, trying to stay pretty conservative. So the two scenarios that we looked at were the annual rate increases at two and a quarter percent, you know, over the next 10 years versus the just-in-time scenario. So basically, not having any rate increases until you actually need to do a rate increase in order to hit your targets, the one and a half times debt service coverage and your 365 days cash on hand. And so you can see on the just-in-time scenario, you could, you could last, you know, hold out about four years, but then you need a seven, almost seven and a half, 7.4% increase in 2029. So whereas on the left-hand side, the two and a quarter, that's kind of a nice steady even increase every year, kind of modest increase. So as far as the two and a quarter percent interest, rate increase, so your annual rate increase scenario, this results in a minimum, minimum debt service coverage ratio of 2.09 times coverage. So over the one and a half times metric the whole time. So you kind of check that box. And your minimum days cash on hand goes down to 484 days, which is still, it's much lower than where you are currently, but nice and healthy level above the 365 days. So the two and a quarter percent works, works pretty well here. And results in 2034, so in 10 years, you know, that average customer bill, you know, the water's $41 and the sewer's about 70, almost $71. Versus if we look at that just-in-time rate scenario, so interestingly enough, so your minimum debt service coverage, it's lower. It's 1.77 times versus the, you know, over two times coverage on the other scenario. The days cash on hand is the constraint here, so it's hitting exactly that 365 days because we're telling the model, only put in rate increases to hit one of those, you know, those two metrics. And what I thought was interesting is your customer bill is actually higher in 2034. It's happened to play a little catch-up. So, and it results, results in a slightly higher water bill and sewer bill when you get out to year 10. So those are the two scenarios that we, that we ran. This is just a quick summary on the page. So you get your two and a quarter percent in the first column there. It looks like, you know, performance-wise, ends up being a little bit stronger, a little bit better, and results in a lower utility rate in year 2034. And then versus your, you know, just-in-time scenario, which is the 1.77 times debt service coverage and, you know, right on the, on the mark with 365 days cash on hand. And then, you know, if you're interested in the back, we've got all the detail, all the cards that you've been working on. It's very small, but just in case anyone wanted that. So that's our presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm Emma calling you from Pro Health Pioneer. Could you hear me?
Okay, so while they're doing, just in case, if city towns and villages are ever blessed to receive our crowdfunding round two ever again, would it behoove us to take some of that money and put it towards our CRP with our water infrastructure? You, you could. I mean, depending if there are any restrictions on the money. But I think that's, to me, that's one-time money. So that's, a good use for that would be towards capital if you, if you could do that. Thank you.
How long would it take? Let's just say that we, we wanted something in between there, like a 2% versus a two and a quarter. How long would it take staff to rerun the model?
I'd say 30 seconds. You're pretty much just plugging in 2% for the next 50 years.
Once you get all of the information, you know, you determine your increases, your, your increases on the different categories of expenditures and your financial data from the previous audit, once you get all of that in and you're just playing with scenarios, it's just a click of a button.
Yeah. That's nice.
Mayor, and for the past few years, that's what, what Wally and Sabrina do when they're looking at the capital projects and trying to look at the rates, not just on the presentation back to council, but in their copious free time, they're playing with those numbers to try and see what that impact looks like. And I think that's the beauty of the model, is it's developed so that staff can utilize it without making the call that Sabrina's saying. And then they can look at, well, what if the bids come in higher on this project than we've got in the CIP? They can input data and then they can move the numbers around. I think that's why the model has so much value for us, is it's real time and 30 seconds. I mean, some of those, we can change that number on year five to say, well, all of a sudden, we want to have 1.75% increase and then here you go. So I just think that's a good concept.
Yeah, and likewise, we set up a macro for the, for the just-in-time scenario. So if you were to change your assumptions on the expenditures or the other revenues or you can, you know, it's, it's a click of a button and that just-in-time scenario would, would update as well.
Does this also apply towards impact funding for, for new, new services? Somebody, you know, we're required, I think, every five years?
Wally?
Yes. Five years to come up with? Is this part of that same scenario?
It's included. Determining the, what the impact fees could be?
Right.
Based on the capital expenditures projection?
I mean, we could do that. I don't see why we, why we couldn't. I mean, we have impact fees in as a revenue.
It is in, in the model as a revenue.
But we have to recalculate every five years to justify, to defend, you know, it's based on that same 10-year CIP.
Right, so Wally's model for the impact pieces, or this is a little bit, well, is this, are we?
We have a separate model for that, but that model, information from that model can feed this model.
But we, we, when we go to the five-year point, we may look at whether or not this model can be used for that purpose. That's what I would see happening.
Yeah.
Mr. Ray, do you remember right offhand how many CIP projects are due to come into fruition for this year?
Wally, ma'am, Dr. Washington.
Numbers, I don't recall off the top of my head. I can't get those to you. I want to say there's 30, 35 active projects, but I think most of those are rollover and it's single-digit new projects.
But we don't have any that we're completing this year?
Oh, we'll have some that are being completed, yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many or you have to take a look at it?
I need to look at it.
We'll send that out to you, Dr. Washington, because that's, you know, part of that challenge for us, not just on the water and the infrastructure side, is wrapping up those projects, because we know other projects on the horizon, we've got to clear off some of that debt service to be able to have that capacity. And I think that's a big part for us to monitor annually, is to see those numbers. So we'll get you that list outside of the CIP that we'll send out. You know, that's part of what we looked at November, I believe. But I didn't tally those, but I'll tally them up and send it back over for Wally's information. That's the fun thing on these graphs, when they're showing in the model and it shows the current debt capacity and then the new capacity on top that we're trying to do. And just like at the top-left corner, where you see 2030, you see the debt service payment reducing on existing, and then you've got that, that delta there for the new debt service. You know, these models show us that, what I would say, it's the, the capacity to handle the things that we need to do to maintain the system. And that's, it takes the gas out of, out of the council's hands, so you have to say, where are we going to be? Without this model, you would, you would really have to spend a lot more time on the what-if scenarios.
Too much time in mystery.
Yeah, this is a beautiful metric for how to monitor how we're utilizing revenues for long-term capital and for everyday operations.
And to build your plan.
Is this, excuse me, does this only work on the financial side? For example, if we're trying to project water and sewer capacity needs for the future, does this also help, help for that?
We did not build in, we could, we've done that with other utilities, but I don't think we've got, oh, no, we do have all the, the customer, we do have all the customer data in this one. Yeah, and so we, I mean, if you wanted to project out future capacity needs or, or you've got, you know, customer growth that's factored in, and that, you know, that's part of the reason why, you know, you can continue to grow the expenditures at a higher rate, but only raise rates to two and a quarter percent, part of that's because you've got, we have growth factor then.
Wally wants to chime in on that.
We actually have an RFQ, a request for qualifications, that's getting ready to go out, or an update to our water model, our sewer model, and our water and sewer master plan. So those, and those will be GIS-based models, so that we can run scenario planning where, you know, if we have a piece of property that wants to develop with 1,000 units down Highway 17, we can look at the impact throughout the entire system. So that RFQ is, we're actually drafting, it should be advertised this month.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I think it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Go ahead and back tonight.
What?
Get it back tonight.
Um, just a little bit, so not, not too far. Not all day back to Charlotte.
All right, good. Safe travels anyway.
Thank you.
Mayor, when you look at those systems, like what Wally's talking about, where we're looking at the overall operation and you tie in the, the funding source too, it just shows you the level at which Wally and his team can work with Sabrina and her team to make sure that we have the long-term effectiveness of operations. I just, it's a good model and you tie them all in together.
Very effective. So let's go ahead and take a recess right now. So we can handle the presentation. All right, let's go ahead and go with the small business revolving loan fund. Go with lead into that.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Want to talk to you about an opportunity to create a small business revolving loan fund. And we're looking at this as a pilot program. It's very similar to something that our economic developers, Joed, already have. But the great news is, is that, you know, with the Economic Impact Fund, we have resources available to us to potentially pursue something like this. Of course, we always tie what we do back to council goals. No two ways about it, this is to enhance employment opportunities, encourage economic development. And then the other piece of this is because of where we're intending to focus the investment, we're hoping that this will be a pretty significant catalyst for downtown redevelopment. You know, if you look at other communities across the state, downtown redevelopment does not occur with big box investment, right? Small business is where it's at, if we want to make downtown what we, what we think it can be. So of course, we're working towards those two goals. But then, as you also probably recall, we adopted an economic development policy last year that gave us a little bit more specific guidance on how to do things like this. So you see words like collaborate with partner agencies, right? To provide, to create programs to start new small business, but then also programs to provide technical assistance for businesses to grow. Now, of course, you know, the first one is directly related to this program that we're going to talk about here in a minute. But before I get to this, before I get to that, I really like to focus on, on number two, because in actuality, because of decisions the council's already made and decisions that HUD has already made, we're actually going to pursue both of these with two separate programs, but they do run in tandem. So right now, we have on a, on the street, an RFP for a small business development program. And as I mentioned, you know, this is something that will be funded by our CDVG dollars. It's identified in the annual action plan, it was allocated in the council budget. So if you recall, this item was on So if you recall, this item was on the council agenda several months ago, but we kind of paused and regrouped because we felt it was best to separate the two funds. Meaning, the CDBG money has certain requirements that we didn't want to impose on the economic investment, your impact fund money, you know, which is essentially general fund money, if you think about it. So, the two goals before talked about focusing on technical capacity and kind of building small businesses that way, but then the other one talked about creating programs to help further small business. So the way that I look at it, business development, you know, the technical side of things is happening there with skill development, business plan refinement, all of that wonderful stuff, particularly things like MBE, DBE certification. And we actually had an event with Genesis Block, I guess it was about six months ago, which is a nonprofit out of Wilmington, who provides these types of services. And we'll see if they respond to the RFP. I know that they were very excited about the opportunity, but that's the initial piece of the puzzle that then could feed into the revolving loan program. So you get people trained up, you get their business plan in place, and then guess what they're looking for? Resources to execute, right? And under the revolving loan program, they could focus on gap funding, maybe they have some money already, or just straight-up capacity building. I need to buy this piece of equipment so that I can do X amount of additional work. But then there's a question next to startups, because, you know, there are pros and cons with funding those. But either way, the point here is that both of these are complementary, okay? The revolving loan concept is essentially creating a revolving loan program. And this is not a grant, so the business, the small businesses would pay the money back. It would either be low or no interest, depending on how we choose to set up the program. And the intent is to build it over the years by continuing to add additional allocations year after year, until the program becomes self-sustainable, or we're just satisfied in how it's operating. We want to focus on downtown entrepreneurship, and one of the main reasons is, is because the CDBG money has to be focused on downtown. You know, it has to be pointed at economically distressed areas, and downtown is one of those. With that, we plan on doing the same thing here, because that's where we plan to see entrepreneurship. That's also where, I lost the words for a second. It's also where we're going to be able to pair with what's going on with the CDBG money, and also forward that goal of the council of spurring downtown redevelopment. Initially, we'd like to seed the program with $50,000 from the Economic Impact Fund, and the intent would be to administer it through the JoEd partnership. And I'll talk about them in a minute. But we, in order to do that, we would have a contract with them that sets up all the terms and how the program works, and, you know, all of those details. Certainly don't have those tonight, but that's what we would like to pursue if council would like to move forward with this. A little bit about the partnership, it's a 501(c)(3). It's basically a sister organization to JoEd itself, so some, there's some overlap in participation, but there are different people that participate as well. And right now, they manage what's called a community business fund. And it's very similar to what we are planning to do, or hoping to do, but the difference is, is that it's focused in all of Onslow County. You know, again, because of that goal to redevelop downtown, the CDBG money pointed at downtown, you know, the intent would be for us to focus this program in that area. But at some point, you know, if we're successful in generating a lot of economic activity downtown, then maybe we would expand it to the rest of the city.
So can someone apply for that now? Is that already in place?
They could, but all the money's been loaned out. The good news is, is that all the money's been loaned out, and all the money is being paid back on time and in full.
And it opens up the door.
Okay? Now, they asked me not to reveal on TV who some of the recipients are, but some of the recipients are businesses that you know. Some of them are businesses that are already downtown, okay? So by having that information, I think it gives us the indication that there is demand, right? And there is integrity in the system of small business owners wanting to make it right on the loan, want to pay it back on time and in full.
Is there an opportunity that a new period will open up for additional individuals, as Mr. Jackson was saying?
That's the intent here, so the concept-
Like the early process, they can apply for?
Yes. The challenge is, right now, the way it's set up with the partnership is, all the money's loaned out for a period of time. So what we would like to do is add $50,000 right now, you know, essentially as a pilot, you know, get all the details set up, the contract executed, and then seek, you know, proposals for new loans, specifically downtown.
Okay, so some of the money is coming from CDBG funding?
The CDBG money, if I can go back to this. So there's two different parts of what we're trying to do downtown with economic development. The business development program, which is the technical one, that provides skill development, mentoring, networking, that's funded with CDBG, okay? The revolving loan fund piece of it, they run in tandem, okay? But that would be funded with the Economic Impact Fund money. And there's a very key reason behind that, and it's because if we were to pair both of them together as one program, we would have to comply with all the federal regulations for all the money. By separating it into two, we have a lot more flexibility with the loan program than with the CDBG money alone.
Now, is there a way that this provides some type of internal protection for the recipients? Because one of the things that I can see, not saying that someone would do it, that an applicant can easily want to, a lack of a better word, rent out a space downtown. And someone is saying, okay, I will let you lease my building, but taking this money and doing all of the upkeeps, and realizing, I've spent my money of all of the upkeeps, but the person that you're leasing it from, basically, you've just pretty much updated their building.
Right, yeah, and so, I think the important piece there is having the appropriate policies, procedures, and the evaluative criteria on who is awarded the money. And that's something that the partnership has been very successful with right now. They've only awarded grants to businesses that are solid in what they're planning to do, and demonstrate the capacity to grow and repay that money in a timely fashion. No, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
There's a certain amount per, like, loan, like, is it like, say, 50, is it 10, five, like, five participants?
Right now, the answer is no.
It just depends on what they apply for.
It depends on what they apply for, but I think to Dr. Washington's point, the intent of this program is not for somebody to apply for money to rehab a building, right? You know, like, for instance, if you have a bakery, and you need a van to be able to deliver your goods, you might be able to borrow $10,000 from this to go buy a van to be able, you know, that's the kind of concept that we're talking about here. Or you need a piece of equipment, or you need something, a piece of software, whatever, right? You have $5,000 already that you save, it costs $10,000, and the $5,000 in gap funding could potentially come from this.
Yeah, the business development part of it is very important, because that's going to help that business-
Wants to establish a good plan that's solid.
And then when the partnership looks at it, then they can make a decision, that's a good decision.
I have a question about the business development chunk of that. It's listed under new programs.
It is.
This is new to us, to be doing this with CBD funds. In a spirit of collaboration and partnerships. The Chamber and Small Business Center offer a lot of these things. Are we working with them to augment, and we don't want to create silos and systems?
The intent is not to create redundant services. The intent with this, really, at least in my mind, is two things. One, for us to focus specifically on downtown, because the mission of the other partners is to focus on the whole community, right? So the mission here is to focus on downtown, and it's also to assist small business owners with navigating the appropriate path to success.
Sure, and even resources that are available for partners. A lot of times, they don't even know where to go.
Right, exactly. One of the things that we found in talking to some of the applicants is that you've got all these resources out here. You may know all of them, you may not, right? But in a lot of cases, a person who needs the support doesn't know where to start, okay? So this is kind of like the helping hand that says, hey, start over here, you know? Think about a graduate fresh from the culinary program at Coastal, right? They know how to cook. They probably had some business development education, but they pop out, and what do you do next, right? These folks could come and do, I mean, in the Genesis Block format, they have a crash course that basically says, you're going to spend eight weeks with us, we're going to teach you A, B, C, and D, and by the time you're done, you're going to be in good shape with a decent business plan, know what the steps are for you to get to success, if you follow all the steps. So that's the concept here, and I didn't mean to take you down that much of a road.
My question, though, is I want to make sure that we aren't creating redundancy, and that we are directing folks to available resources, as well as maybe filling in gaps where existing providers don't necessarily do this slice of the pie, we can add that slice.
And in fact, when Genesis Block was talking about coming to Jacksonville, and I think that they're going to come to Jacksonville whether they are selected for, you know, this business development program or not, you know, when they talked about coming initially, we had folks from the Small Business Center join us, other departments of the community college, JoEd, you have to help me, who else would, there are a bunch of people. NC Works was there, you know, there are a lot of folks involved in small business development, you know, employment in general. We got together, and they were very excited about this type of opportunity, because it is the glue that really helps stick them all together.
And one of the things I was seeing when I went to visit, because they were dealing with the food industry, you know, with the three different businesses that had worked in that incubator, is that, and I see a lot of people who actually want to work in that, you know, that's their skill set, but the issue is the other stuff. They can cook, but they don't know how to do the business of it yet.
Like sales.
How do you do the permitting?
Right.
Permitting.
I mean, how do you do that, right? Who do you need to talk to? What kind of, you know, how are you going to do the accounting and the bookkeeping? And who do you need to talk to about that, so?
And I kind of think of it, you know, with the CBD projects, so first-time homebuy, it's kind of walking, as I say, from the cradle to adulthood, you know, to be able, make sure you can, you have all the tools to sustain.
Well, hopefully, you know, if they go through the entire program, they receive a part of, you know, money from the loan program, and they end up on the other end, they graduate, and they're very successful businesses.
And the old, the master of the programs.
So the, right now, the RFP that's out is to solicit a nonprofit, very likely, that will administer this business development program, okay? So that's going to be a competitive process. It has to be because of the CDBG money. The revolving loan piece of it, where, where did I go? I'm going the wrong way.
There you go.
Here we go. The intent is to contract with JoEd Partnership to administer the program on our behalf. And again, the reason is, is because they're already doing this for grants throughout all of Onslow County. They have the policies, the procedures, the evaluative criteria. Of course, we can customize all of that with our agreement, but if I fast-forward here and show you some of the people who are involved, you know, you see Melissa Anderson, who is a very prominent business owner in the community, Terry Ashby, Susan Edwards, Scott Riggs, who have been in the banking industry for a very long time, Jeff Clark, this is Jones Onslow Jeff, he does the thing, too, about business. You know who David Smitherman is, and somehow they let me hang out with him, too. But, you know, the point is, we've got some really skilled business people and bankers involved in making these decisions.
Part of the connectivity here, going back to what Anthony pointed out, is when we talked before about all the partners in the community and how we connect individuals, back to Ms. Edwards' statement there, I think we've got an opportunity that we're presenting to council to pull these partners together, including Sturgeon City is another that we didn't mention.
Yes.
But that's the ninth different partner that we'd like to pull together, and then utilizing the Economic Impact Funds that council appropriated last year. I think between Anthony and Tracy, we've developed an opportunity for council to consider how we can get those funds back into small business development. Hopefully, it's going to spurn some of that economic impact downtown, and then it'll matriculate outside of that as we grow. But the goal is to kick it off, figure out the policies and procedures. That goes back to where Dr. Washington is talking about on those procedures. We've got to get the work in to show you what that'll look like on the program. The good news is, JoEd has a lot of that backbone already established, so we don't have to recreate it. So if we go through JoEd, we can work through them in this agreement, and we've got a strong partner to be able to make it effective.
The other benefit-
Who establishes the benchmarks to denote whether it's being successful or not?
The agreement will do that, and the city council will do that. And those benchmarks may change over time, you know, who knows? I think the most important thing is, is that we consult with people who have been doing this, to learn exactly what the best performance metrics are, how we should establish them moving forward.
And that's what this group's been doing now, Mr. Bittner. So Scott Riggs is leading that program up through JoEd, and he's looking at, what are those, what are those performance measures that show if we are seeing an impact? And part of that is a longer-term play. If you think about it, one of the things that Tracy's team's tried to do with the CDBG funds into the small business and trying to get nonprofits started is, they want to maintain some nonprofits, and then they want to grow new nonprofits. This is the same kind of strategy, and as Anthony pointed out, I see it as gap funding, but it could be specific project funding. The sad thing is, some aren't going to be successful, some are. If we continue, if council sees it as a benefit, and it's effective, and you tell us we want to keep going, well, you've had to have seen some kind of metric that says it's successful, because then next year, what we're probably going to do is say, can we add some additional seed money? We want to keep the revolving part going, but then we want to add more if it's effective. If it's not effective, we're going to come back and say, we'd like to change course.
Well, what can we do next?
You know, I was just thinking, I know the youth council, they actually provide funds to different organizations. Do they do that with young entrepreneurs? I can't remember, but it's nonprofits, right?
They use nonprofits, yes, sir, but they don't do a lot of young entrepreneurship.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out.
And we just, Pamela Trafton just reactivated that full process this past year, and I think they allocated $7,500, plus or minus, is what the youth council went through, and they had a number of recipients, which, you know, that's another extra avenue to try and engage younger people in entrepreneurship at this level. If we can create this partnership through CDBG funding, and they can work with this chosen nonprofit, I think we're going to see multiple tentacles going out within the community at different levels to try and have new business development opportunities.
Now, with the CDBG money, and talking to Tracy and Pam, that has very specific metrics that have to be accomplished. Those were included in the annual action plan. So the subjectivity here only lies in the loan program. And so that's where we would need advice from the folks on the screen here, of course, other than me, but, you know, to figure out what is good performance. The other thing about it is, we've got some pretty capable folks here that are willing to work on this for nothing, you know? And if you think about it, our other option, if we wanted to do something like this, would be to manage it with in-house staff. Our goal here, just like the policy said, is to work with partners, collaborate with others, and use their ability to do stuff like this for the benefit of the community. So last slide here, next steps, if council authorizes us to pursue this, which we hope you would, the intent is to start working with the partnership on the contract terms. We'll- We'll develop those terms and, of course, come back to council and get feedback and hopefully approval to move forward before we do anything else. Okay?
You bring it to the 21st meeting.
The, January 21st? We'll have a framework of a plan, how about that? I'm not sure we'll have a fully developed contract.
If you call Scott Riggs and tell him to accelerate the concept.
We're going to, we'll bring it back with some terms around it, maybe not a fully drafted contract, but yes, we can talk about it again. The intent is to get this thing up and running and hopefully have grant awards done well before the beginning of next year, because if we are successful and if the council is comfortable, then we would like to ask for additional funding in '26.
We can authorize the funding before you draw the contract.
Correct.
So we have agreements up, so at least that part of it will be done, we're bringing it up at 21st meeting, that's the only reason I suggested that.
So really, yes, what we're looking for is the green light to start working.
You just need consensus this evening or a vote?
We need consensus.
Consensus is fine.
Mr. Raz?
I mean, we have money in the budget, don't we?
The money is already.
Money's already there.
Yeah, there's $50,000 set aside in the current budget, and so we're just saying, this is the way we intend to use it.
The only thing I would say, you have ample authority, the city has ample authority to contract with private nonprofits to undertake activities and purposes which the city could do directly if it chose to. The only condition is, there needs to be some mechanism for post auditing, there needs to be accountability tracking the fund, so after the monies are spent, you need to have people report how that shook out. The only thing I would say is, just, you don't have to have a contract to make the appropriation as long as there's some parameters on how the money is spent, but I just be cautious about the fact that you don't want to make the appropriation and have programs commenced, and you get around to drafting an agreement and you see that there may be some inconsistency there, that's all.
We can fully commit to not pursuing any awards until the contract is signed.
The money is.
The money is.
It's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah, and we do have examples of similar things where we partner with nonprofits, and it has the audit requirements in it, and so we'll work with our friend Raz here to make sure that all the contract terms are comfortable and consistent. But we can't, we will come back on the 21st if you like to talk more about it. Get it moving.
You're asking to move forward.
Best the approach and let us go work on the details.
Consensus is normally how we'd end.
Yeah.
Right, until we have to have the formal approval of both.
Keep moving, okay? Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, now we can.
Everybody's okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Everybody's okay. You have consensus.
$10,000 off that we might have for sale for $100,000 or something.
Tell Scott Riggs to get hot, who makes the deal.
Well, I imagine Scott will be here on the 21st. He's very excited about this opportunity, and, you know, this is, his heart is completely into this program, so he'll be very excited when I call him.
He's a good fellow.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next. Legislative goals, Josh.
Thanks, Mayor. This item, we talked about during the retreat this year, it's very important for us to establish legislative goals every year prior to our legislators going to work for, not just for the state, but for us. And you're going to see our goals this year, as we've talked about, are a little different because they're not just focused on what Jacksonville needs, they're focused on Onslow County, and they're focused on communities across the state. We are supporting the league, we're supporting the Association of Counties, and we're supporting every municipality, 515 plus in the great state of North Carolina, saying, we want to work together to make things better, and we do it from our view as a municipality. We do start out with our mission statement, that's very important for us, we've included it in the draft resolution, you'll see. We also included the vision, because that's where council starts with every item that we're trying to lay out in terms of a policy statement. Back to our goals, very important for us to tie back in for the council adopted goals, and you'll see here, utilizing an inclusive approach to problem solving and working with state legislative delegation, regional, military, and local levels. That's very important for this list of 13 goals this year, is to clearly define all of those partnerships. Our legislators, especially our group, are very talented, and a lot of times, we will go to our people with our needs and say, we're the most important, therefore, fight for this. We want to support them in all that we do. The mayor's been working to schedule the meetings with our Onslow delegation before they go back, so that they know clearly what we're working on and what we're going to work with them on this year. You'll see that their session effectively starts per their statute, it starts tomorrow, and it goes through July 31st. So our goal is to, if council approves this resolution tonight, is to go ahead and start distributing our legislative goal to every senate and congressman and house representative in the state of North Carolina, is to make sure they understand what we're working together. And the second part of this is, we're working as a collective Onslow County body, that's the county and all the towns and the city of Jacksonville working together for our priorities. So what I was going to list these priorities for you quickly, just so you can see it. If council would like to change any of these priorities, we can take them off, we could add to it. What we've tried to do, as I said, is work through our regional partners and through the league and the Association of County Commissioners to make sure that we're highlighting the areas that we want to focus on. The first being, we have, we would like to see capital funding for our multi-use facility. We think that's a number one priority for us for many years to come. If there's an opportunity for that funding this year, we want to make sure that they know we're a great candidate, especially with us about to complete our 30% plans. And as we move into final set of plans that we hope to have completed by December of 2025, we'll need to figure out additional funding sources to help us with the development of the project. Second is expanding infrastructure for local governments. You'll see, we say for local governments again in general, not just for Jacksonville, that's water, sewer, stormwater, streets, curb and gutter, all these things tied in together. The concept here is for the state to continuously focus on the expansion of infrastructure and for the overall maintenance of the systems. We have a big project that we've been working on now that goes back to this area. This number three is a pretty big deal for us as we're talking about it. We're asking for economic development funding for Onslow County in general, but specifically for the projects in Holly Ridge, Swansboro, and Jacksonville. And the reason we say that, and in that order, is we have three big project areas that JoEd's working on. Holly Ridge, big project. Swansboro, new project, big project. And in Jacksonville, our project frontier is a project that's continuing to develop with one excellent partner now and some others onboard. But I think it's, I think it's important for us as a community to say, we're supporting these items, so when you're talking to our senator, to our congress, our house reps, can't get congressman out of my head, when you're talking to these individuals, we want to push these projects as well as a region. This priority number four is increased funding for NC DOT for District 3 for our projects that we have, but we also need to be mindful, there's another priority here, that in western North Carolina, a lot of the funding is going to need to go towards recovery from Helene, and that's good for us to be mindful of that. But after that fact, we want to make sure that our projects are moved back up in order so that we can move those along. This next one, Powellville funding, we've talked about this for the last probably two decades here in North Carolina, about looking at ways to expand Powellville funding. Mayor, I think you mentioned it before, with some of our, some of our funds going down now based on some electric vehicles that were having challenges now. So road priorities are going up, but Powellville funding is going down. It's still one of the best systems in the country for municipal street funding is the Powellville. We just need to figure out how you can make it work. And for the, for our legislators, they're just going to have to balance out where they can put these funds, they can't put it everywhere, but we've got some of these challenges ourselves. And then we're going to, we're going to backfill the shortcomings with our revenue streams. This next one, council said this is a very important priority, create incentives to encourage the development of diverse housing options. This is what we've been talking about for at least the two years that we've worked together. What it says is, the incentives don't necessarily go to the cities and to the counties, they go to the developers to make things happen. It may be tax incentives, it may be revenue streams, but we want to encourage them to look outside of the current systems to try and activate those partnerships. Back to Anthony's point, the partnerships are where we're going to be successful, not the city trying to go out and build multi-unit houses. Number seven, this is still a continual priority for the state as a whole, but to rehabilitate and purchase blighted properties, that's a big deal as blight continues to happen when resources are diminished in a community, some of these properties can be purchased and rehabilitated. We want to encourage that for the state legislators. You know, a lot of times, they want to pull some of those rights away from local governments to say, you can't use these means to purchase those properties. We want to encourage them to allow cities and counties to continue on these programs because they can revitalize different neighborhoods within town. Number eight is local revenue options beyond the property tax. We continuously talk about that through the state. It's a big deal. Some legislators are going to tell you, they don't encourage anything else, you got to add the lorm tax, that's what you get, you need to live within your means. I don't disagree with them, I don't think a lot of our council disagrees with that concept, we want to live within our means, but there's some other things that we need to be able to at least tap into to see if there are options to make things happen. And the property tax, especially for Jacksonville, where we're only getting about 44% of our property is being taxed because the United States government owns the rest of it, we need to be able to think about those options and not put everything back on to our landowners. Update the annexation petition thresholds to make voluntary annexations easier to initiate. Once we've had the restrictions that it's voluntary or nothing, we want to make sure that that pathway is easy, and that goes back to a lot of our developers, they want a process that is streamlined, and they can start clearly with a path, they can move it through the local government, and then they can get the, they can get the access that they need to our utilities and our infrastructure. We want to make sure that stays a priority. This next one is preserving the ETJ, that's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The point there is, you choose to be either inside the city for those protections or outside the city. Preserve what we have now with the ETJ so that well-planned subdivisions and the investment of homeowners are protected. That's the division between county and city property, and this has been a league priority for the last few years. It'll continue to be a league of municipalities priority, and we've talked, we think that's something we should support. This next one touched us last year, protecting the ability of the elected officials to act on the behalf of the voters who put you in office to determine your election format, your districts, and other matters related to the election. This is a big deal. Last year, we were surprised to see that someone had introduced legislation to say that we move our elections to all occur during the presidential elections, to the main elections. That wasn't something that this council came up with, it's happened throughout the state, some have passed, some have passed and said that they're going to have partisan elections, and that's not something that local governments have supported. So the league has said this is very important, and for us, since it came up last year, we've put this on here to say, the voters put this group of council members into office to make these decisions, and we encourage them to stay focused there. Number 12 goes back to a previous comment, expand funding opportunities for disaster resiliency and recovery efforts. A lot of this will focus back on federal funds, which we've seen with Helene and some other actions by the current president and city members of Congress, and so we want to continue to say, this is very important for us. Although right now, those efforts are focused on western North Carolina, as we've said multiple times, we are more prone to disaster than western North Carolina. And so we know this is a play short term for our neighbors, but long term, it's for all of us, and I think there's a value. And then for number 13, this is really important, there's some legislation that was in last year, and that's Senate Bill 166 and 382, that although they had some real positive items, which would have been some funding for western North Carolina and some other actions throughout the state, there were also some challenges that were placed on local government, which eliminated our ability to amend or create development regulations. At this point, we feel confident that when this session begins, that they may repeal parts of 166 and SB 382, but I think we need to continue to voice our opposition to these items. When items happen at the end of a session or during a special session, a lot of times, we lose the ability to have a presence and have a voice. We're going to change our approach this year, and we're going to have more of an active presence in Raleigh, and we're going to be there with our legislators to make some rounds. We'd like to make the rounds with our priorities lockstep with what Onslow, Holly Ridge, and the other municipalities are. So this is, this is very important for us. There's about seven different items that Ryan would like to add on here, we've condensed them into here, and we're going to communicate back to the league to say, we'll work with them as we have for the last two years to provide the support they need. But those are our, those are our 13, Mayor. If council would like to change those, if you don't feel comfortable with approving the resolution at this time, you can bring it back on the 21st, and we'll fight the fight when you tell us what to go fight with. If you are comfortable, we ask you to consider the resolution and allow us to go out and prosper with it moving forward.
Might have to change the wording on number 10 about the ETJ, considering that piece of legislation, if I'm not, help me Raz, if I'm incorrect, but didn't the legislation go through and get signed already that stripped away that ETJ?
I mean, doesn't fully strip it, what it does, it goes back to 13 where it takes out what your authority is within an ETJ and inside. So the ETJ still exists to the best of my knowledge, but some of those.
Trying to change the mileage.
We are getting good faith on the ETJ because we cut out a lot of it because we knew we were never going to annex it, so, but there are cases where you know you've got avenues of growth and you don't want that to go away.
Mayor, that goes, it goes back to what Mr. Warden and Wiley were talking about earlier in terms of that development and that growth and where we're going to grow. We have to plan those items out, or else we can't get the infrastructure there. And our other partner, Onlasse, you know, we have to communicate with them to make sure that we're handling those development zones and those growth areas. Right now, we could show you three highly active development areas that without infrastructure, they can't develop. They just, it's not functional for them to make it happen. So that ETJ is critical for us long term.
So you're asking us to approve the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any input, they want to get to manage all these?
Mayor, I'll make one comment, and if this is being too fussy, I apologize, because we have discussed this beforehand, Josh. Senate Bill 382 is a Helene relief bill, and I sense this is a formal resolution rather than just having the last part of that, that actually repeal SB 166. I would just suggest you say repeal in part or revise, because you really don't want to formally express that the bill should be repealed.
I think that's wise.
Great point.
Got another question, too. We said District 3, we mean Division 3.
If you're, yeah, if you're correct on that, I was thinking.
Division is the larger, and it covers more than one county. A district is in just Onslow County, so, but districts are, like, there's a District 3 in every division. So if we're intending to provide it to the headquarters or.
Yeah. So we might need to update that. We, you know, we partnered that in discussion with Onslow County's resolution that they passed, so we can clarify that one as well, Mayor, if you're good with that, in terms of streamlining the district, district and division?
Well, in other words.
Well, in other words, it's the vision that the funding gets broken down to, you know, and they don't, internal it to the division, they move it to the various counties, so...
Yeah, that's great, Mayor.
So you need council approval, Mayor?
With those two changes.
And nothing's going to substantially change other than what we mentioned?
No, sir, that's going to be it, Mayor.
All right, so Wally, want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for council to adopt the goals with the adopted changes as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Period 9, favor 65, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That brings us to one city.
Thank you, Mayor. I say it again, I think with those three presentations tonight, you've got a lot of activity going on, I appreciate council's support for what we've done. You'll see in front of you, Mayor, this is a group of our firefighters, and it's not just a group picture that we wanted to share with you because they were having a great day. This is the group of firefighters who, on December 29, responded to a distressed driver who had driven into a detention pond through a fence, and the vehicle was becoming submerged in water. There was one driver, and these individuals, they acted accordingly. It was a very serious incident, luckily they responded, they were able to pull the car out and get the driver out and rescue the person. Without their activity, I don't think that person would be with us today. And this was a young driver, and this was the team that responded, and for us, we thought...
Wow, it don't take long, either.
This is very important for us to be able to appreciate the actions by both our fire department and our police department for responding so quickly.
Right, there's a reason why if you go into water like that, you don't try to bust out the side windows or the front windows, because it's called float lock.
Yeah, it's very crazy to hear the rest of the story, but I tell you, it's great that our men and women were there to rescue this individual, and some things happen, and that's why we have them. So such a value there to see them active. Then we roll in here, Mayor, so every year, we have the opportunity, not only are our city calendars good for our citizens to try and keep us up to date about the things that are going on, including tonight's council meeting, but it's also good because we make contact with as many of our citizens as we possibly can. The fire department leads this effort, so once the media team puts together the calendars between the clerk, the media, and working with departments, they get the items on the calendars, then we develop the calendar and then distribute the calendar. So you see, we use the big trucks because people want to see that we're coming out and we're delivering them. If you're not home, you probably found it on your front door, and if you didn't get one, you need to let us know, because we want you to be informed. But I think this is a really big deal. This guy didn't come to the meeting tonight, Mayor, but for some reason, he's happy about his calendar.
I didn't know he had that.
Well, I'm happy that Chief Tomlin is part of our team, too, as happy as he is, and I just tell you, this is an excellent outreach effort that council started many years ago, and we don't have any intentions to stop doing it. Chief Tomlin has motivated other departments to help distribute the calendars, and I think a lot of people take pride in being able to get out and do part of the distribution, so. Yeah, don't look around, he's really not here, I don't know where he's at, I haven't seen him all day.
He was here earlier.
I haven't seen him, I don't know what happened. So Winterfest, we just had Winterfest, annual event for us, we go down to Riverwalk, and this event, the Parks and Recreation Departments together do an amazing job hosting this event. It looks impressive, this is ice skating at Riverwalk, and if you go down there right tonight, there's no ice skating there, this is something that they made happen for our, I was going to say kids, but anybody can get out there, an awesome event, the lights are spectacular. Now, they're going to come down soon, because that's what we do, but I saw them last night, they still look incredible. Here's the snowball in the slide area, that our Parks team loads the ice into that machine by hand for hours to give us snow, because the rest of us don't want to have snow everywhere else. So they make our own snow, and it magically disappears, but it's good to have these individuals out. There's the real smiling faces, you know, you've got kids, you've got families, you've got individuals, Sonic's even present there, so you see, all the way around, this is an excellent event, and the location is beautiful. When you could go walk through this archway, you know, you go over here, and then the flotilla happened later that evening after the tree lighting, excellent event. If you go around to the left, that's where Santa's Village is at, and you can go in and buy candy by the pound. And then we have our carolers here, and then we had our council members who helped us flip the switch this year, and this year was a lot of fun. You allowed a lot of our kids to come up and be part to this and to make the official tree lighting happen. I think that night, Dr. Washington and Mr. Jackson and Ms. Edwards were all present on stage. If I missed anybody, I apologize, but it was a great event, excellent turnout. We also made some changes this year to make sure some sound resonated a little better, and the kids had a lot of fun. And the last slide I have for you, Mayor, is, we had our senior holiday social, and it's another event where we engage with our citizens to bring people together to have a good time. Mayor said something yesterday about some other activities that we're looking at for our senior activities. We do programs from five-year-old to 95-years-old, and I think that's a credit to our Recreation Department for staying active, for consistently trying to reach out to citizens and to make things happen. Just like you saw with Pastor Chris and the church, they're invested in our programs, just like council has continuously been invested, and our staff just loves to have that opportunity to engage. So a whole lot going on in our city, Mayor, and as always, we appreciate the opportunity to interact with citizens and make things happen one way or the other.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed.